Thank you all for joining us this evening. We're going to go ahead and get our meeting started if you'll join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, first on our agenda is our land acknowledgement. Director Perkins is going to go ahead and read that for us.
Evergreen Public Schools resides on the traditional lands of the Chinaman peoples in the Calix tribe. They have lived on and cared for this land and its waterways since time immemorial. We thank them for their stewardship and make this acknowledgement to open a space of recognition, inclusion, and respect for all indigenous families, students, and staff in our community.
Thank you, Director Perkins. Next is our adoption of our agenda. Entertain a motion.
I move that we adopt tonight's agenda as presented.
Second?
Adopted and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Wonderful. Go ahead and get our meeting started. Next is our board consent agenda.
Move adoption of the board consent agenda as presented?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is our superintendent consent agenda. Motion to approve or to approve, sorry.
I move to approve tonight's superintendent consent agenda.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is the superintendent's report. Turn it over to Superintendent Boyd.
Thank you, Director Gronwald. Just a few things to report on. There's been a lot in the news about fentanyl, which is a very dangerous drug that is rampant in our streets. We had a report from Sergeant Bill Sofianos from Clark County Sheriff's Office that prompted us to take some action. One was to develop a website with all of the information related to the dangers of fentanyl. We also sent out a letter to all of our families, talking to our families about the dangers of it, some resources and some resources for how to talk to their students. So we'll continue to do professional learning with our principals, with our staff, and with our other folks to make sure that folks are aware of the dangers of fentanyl in our community. And I'll just say that what is kind of terrifying about this is that Officer Sofianos told us that, you know, a dosage of fentanyl the size of two grains of sand could kill someone. So we want to be direct. It's an intense topic, but we want to be direct about that in communicating with our families so folks know and understand and can talk to their students. We had an opportunity to Director Perkins and I to go to a Clark County Regional Legislative Forum. So that was great to listen to and hear from our legislators. We continue to do work on that. And Director Perkins has been invited to Washington DC because he's done some really impressive work around helping the whole state understand the special education funding gap. So we're real excited for you to engage in that opportunity and support us to be able to maybe get some more resources. As folks may or may not understand, we have about a $10 million gap for what's funded for special education and for what we spend. So much of our levy resource goes to support that when it should be fully funded by the state. So thank you, Director Perkins, for your work on that. Had an opportunity to go to Mountain View and visit and watch their music performance and was absolutely mind-blowing away by the, just the level of excellence there. You could close your eyes and feel like you're in just a city symphony. It was just beautiful and stunning. Our music programs, I've said this before, are among the best I've ever seen. And it's just really inspiring to see that. I saw Director Weatherspoon there and we both had big smiles on our faces listening to that wonderful music. Today's, as I'm continuing to visit schools and pass out the MVP award. So I think we might see that in our upcoming Good News. But we're having principals select someone in their building, a classified or a certificated staff to, that's gone above and beyond for students. So we're, I've been passing those out and we've got a website filled with our MVPs throughout the district. My next round of visits, this last couple of weeks, I've visited several schools, including, I was able to be at Silver Star today. And I've gone to several schools to be able to, Harmony, Hawaii East, Cascadia Tech, Heritage. And I'm visiting schools and asking principals to talk about the challenges, the successes, talk about their math focus. And we're visiting classrooms to see their leadership in action and how their leadership is resulting in powerful and ambitious instruction around math for us. And that's been phenomenal work. We had principal professional development for our elementary principals today related to our math focus. We're now really leaning into the notion that if we're going to be focusing on math, we really need to be monitoring math real time. I will say that Dr. Williams made us dance. So you may see a formal complaint from me about that. That's cruel and unusual punishment for someone rhythmically challenged. And I'm excited to get the report that Dr. Williams is going to give on our strategic planning today and that we're going to hear from our, both Ruth and Jamila, related to our youth truth. So good stuff coming up.
Great, thank you. Next on our agenda is our board reorganization. So every year, we reorganize our leadership positions. And so at this time, we will begin that process. First up, we have election of a new president.
Can I just add something real fast, Ginny?
Absolutely.
So one of the things that this board workshopped last summer, when we had some, we just had some time to take, for the board and do some workshop items, is we talked about board reorganization and how we function as a board unit and how we move forward. And sometimes to give everyone an opportunity, that we would, you know, kind of be on more of a rotating basis and give people chances to be in leadership roles. And if things might change, it might not always be a direct science because of, you know, variations. Maybe somebody's newer on the board or maybe they have something that's going on that would keep them from doing the leadership role.
So with that, do I have any nominations for the president position or accepting nominations?
I'll extend a nomination for Julie Boekanegger as board chair.
All right, so nomination for Julie as board chair. Is there a second?
I second.
All right, so there has been a nomination and a second. Julie, would you accept the position of?
Yes.
Board president? All right. So it's been first and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Perfect. Here's the gavel.
Thank you, Ginny. Thank you for your year of leadership in the board chair position. It's not always easy, but thank you for guiding us this past year.
It's been a learning experience. It's been fun. It's been a lot of fun, but definitely a learning experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Ginny. All right, so at this time, we will move on to election of a vice president. If we could entertain a motion for vice president.
I would like to nominate Rob Perkins as vice president.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Rob Perkins as vice president. Rob, do you accept the nomination?
I accept.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Yay, congratulations, Rob.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we usually choose a legislative representative, somebody who works on the board's behalf with local legislators and then also in Olympia, attends WASDA events and does some of those things to make sure that we advocate what John was talking about. So Rob has done this position. How many years now in a row?
Five, six?
At the same time, he represented our board. He was representing our region at WASDA. And recently, he took a different role with WASDA, volunteering up there. So Rob, thank you for that time. I know that, and I kind of wanted to address that Victoria Bradford is absent this evening. She's traveling and wasn't able to make tonight's meeting. I think she's on a plane on her way back. But I know that she has expressed some interest in taking ledge rep. I think she's done it in the past and had made some comments that she was willing to do it again. So I don't know if we have a motion for legislative rep?
I'd like to nominate Victoria, or Director Bradford, for legislative rep.
I second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Victoria is not here to accept the nomination, but I'll.
I think I hear her up there.
I could suggest that we take a vote on her appointment, contingent on her acceptance of the nomination, and move forward from there. I was actually at a meeting earlier today where folks talked, where WASDA was talking about the conditions for legislative reps. And some districts just have the president appoint somebody. Some districts do a formal vote nomination. If we fall somewhere in between this time, it's not going to be a problem. Chair and vice chair is probably a little different. For this one, yeah.
All right, so I think that that's good. I think we can move forward with our vote. So all in favor of Victoria Bradford being legislative rep, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Perfect. All right, next on our agenda, this is really exciting because this, I think, is the first time in Evergreen school district history that we have board reps that are joining our school board. Student board reps. Thank you, John. It's been a long process and I'm going to turn it over to Ginny and Jackie to kind of talk about the process that we went through the last year.
So actually, our student board rep process started pre-COVID. Unfortunately, COVID kind of derailed the process. But just a quick kind of overview of what we started as a board and kind of where it's come and where it is now. So we have always known we wanted student representatives on our school board. We wanted ways to be able to connect with our students, find out what was going on in their schools. We do surveys. They come back with results, but we never really know what's going on in each individual school. So, and all over the state, there's student board reps for a lot of the school districts. So as we took on this process and we started looking at what other districts have done, best practices, kind of how they all functioned, we realized that most school boards actually only have two student reps. Usually, they're seniors, maybe juniors and seniors. And that's great, but being the, I think we're still the sixth largest school district in the state of Washington, we knew we wanted to be, we wanted this to look different. We wanted this to look like how it needed to look like for Evergreen. We have four large high schools and then two of our, well, they're still comprehensive. There's no difference between any of them. So ultimately, in Evergreen, we have six high schools. And we wanted to make sure that we were hearing from all of them. So we decided to have two reps from each high school. Then that looked really large. And we started to try to go through how they were going to intertwine with the board. We were looking at our procedures, what they were going to do, what meetings they were going to go to, who they were going to be involved in. And really, it was, I felt we were smothering the process. And I really wanted our students, or we really wanted our students to be a part of this process. We wanted this to look how they wanted it to look, along with the school board. So we wanted to do this in partnership. And so then, when Jackie was appointed to the board, she joined me in pushing this forward after COVID and kind of really digging deep into this. So we've actually have appointed, we went through application process, interview process, and we've started with two juniors that will help us within the district. We have two juniors from two different high schools and that were chosen. And actually, I'll let Jackie kind of go over that process. I'm doing all the talking, so go for it.
We had interviews with five students and we narrowed it down to these two excellent students here. We're very excited to have you. It was a very hard choice because there are so many amazing student leaders in our district. And we feel like these two students will represent our students very well and help us sort of put together the board for the students in a way that will sort of represent everybody. So we're great, we're very happy to have you here.
So over the next couple of months, we will work closely with our new student board reps to mold this program. And come the spring, we will then submit out requests for applications to appoint the two, a junior and a senior from each of our high schools to start next year with us and move forward. And with that?
So I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Boyd, who's going to administer the oath of office.
Is there a handheld? Or you got me? It's picking me up? Great. Well, I'm going to speak from here so folks online can hear too. But I just want to say congratulations to Covenant and Sullivan for being our successful candidates for student board rep. You are both blazing a trail. As Director Gronwald said, you're going to help us design how we work with the rest of our student body. So big, you're going to have a big job to do, but we absolutely feel like we got the right two for the job. So we want to do a formal swearing in for you. So if you'll raise your right hand for us there, we'll have you repeat after me. I, Covenant Chukwocha. Okay, and I'm going to do this simultaneously. So I, Sullivan Taylor.
I, Sullivan Taylor.
The rest, we can do together. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And laws.
And the laws.
Of the state of Washington.
Of the state of Washington.
And will do the best of, and will to the best of my judgment.
And will to the best of my judgment.
Skill.
Skill.
And ability.
And ability.
Truly.
Truly.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
Diligently and impartially.
Diligently and impartially.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
Evergreen School District.
Evergreen School District.
Student representatives to the board.
Student representatives to the board.
As such.
As such.
Duties are prescribed by law and policy.
Duties are prescribed by law and policy.
You are now sworn in, board, student board reps of the Evergreen Public Schools. Congratulations. May be seated.
You feel like a proud parent all of a sudden. You need to make it official with their signatures.
To see a program that we've all put so much time and effort into come to this point and moving forward, it's pretty amazing. I'm really excited. Thank you, guys.
Welcome.
All right, welcome. Thank you.
If I could interject before we move on to the next one is, in the next few days or weeks, whenever he can get things organized for us all, a colleague of mine, Logan Endris, of the Washington State School Directors Association, has materials and supports for student representatives to the board. I don't know if you've heard his name yet or met him, but with this appointment, you will have some access to opportunities for advocacy in Olympia, if you're willing, and also the camaraderie of all the other student board representatives in the state. You may know that at annual conference in November, the student representatives come together and they have a program as well. So I'm really excited that you're along for this. Really just happy.
Thanks, Rob. All right, next on our agenda, we have to appeal the hearing decision of the IMC book challenge. So a little bit of background, can I turn this over to you maybe for the background or of the, how we came to this?
Yeah, happy to do that. We, a couple of months ago, we had a challenge to the book 47. It is, was a book in our middle school classroom set. The instructional materials committee heard from the individuals that brought the complaint forward. A decision was made to remove that book from the seventh grade libraries, but not remove it from other places in the, in the school system. So we had a challenge to that decision and the board now must determine whether or not to uphold that decision or to overturn it.
And just to clarify, it was removed from seventh grade classrooms throughout the district only?
Correct.
But it's still in libraries amongst the entire district? Okay. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and we can open it up for discussion or we can make a motion and then open it up for discussion?
Well.
You want to discuss?
I think we could profitably have a discussion before we decide on a motion, yeah. Am I going to start or?
You want to go ahead and start, Rob?
I, I've been giving this a lot of thought and recognize that there were some deep feelings connected to the complaint. There were reports of problems that the students and the teachers had communicating with one another over what they were allowed to do. And I think some nuance got lost in the middle of all the process, just in the, you know, day-to-day realities of the classroom and so forth. I've read the book. I come from a different heritage than the folks who filed the complaint. I was taught certain things that helped me to recognize that there were words and usages and circumstances and scenes in the book that would be shocking to children who hadn't ever come across those kinds of facts before. I, I'm trying to be as thoughtful as I, as I can as I say this because sometimes just making the words is, doesn't come across as I mean it. But I haven't got, I can see too much of an advantage to keeping the book where seventh graders might have access to it because it would be advantageous and educational for children who have my heritage to learn about, for example, what it was like so often for a slave in the South before the Civil War. And so my inclination is to maintain the book in the schools where they are and to really ask John to respond to the backstory of the student and the teacher and the circumstances behind that to see if we can add some information to publications and books in those collections that would help a child and a student pick from the list of books. So my inclination is to reverse the decision of the, of the IMC, but still try to find a way to recognize that there are triggers in our classroom sets. And these are halls of learning, these schools. And so there are going to be times when, what do they call it? The productive frustration or productive rigor is something that happens. But we also need, as adults, to be sure to see and recognize those points. And we've set that aside. We've set that out in our results policies and our operational expectations policies. So my hope is that we can all get better at taking care to see our kids where they are. Yeah.
I believe that our instructional materials committee was very thoughtful in their choice and they didn't remove it from students, from the libraries. The students still have access to the book. What they're saying is that, if I'm reading it correctly, that it won't be part of this unit of learning. And so it would not be something that students wouldn't have access to. I do think that the process needs to be looked at in terms of how these appeals are these, this is done, the IMC process is done. I am concerned about how the student was told they couldn't get another book. So that process needs to be looked at as well, but I'm not for, at this point, repealing their decision.
For me, in reading the minutes from the IMC meeting, the decision, the appeal, so ultimately, it was brought before us to appeal the decision that the IMC committee made, which was to remove this book from the seventh grade classroom and remove it as a suggestion as part of this curriculum. We've all read the book. For me, there is not enough evidence to overturn the IMC's decision, which we have, we have this team to do these types of things for a reason. And I feel that we need to support them in this decision. A couple of things on the overall process, I believe that it can be reviewed. I do not believe that just because it was originally approved by the district and the board that it should not be rereviewed. I don't think that that should be a reasoning for keeping a book in a classroom just because at some point it was approved by us. Because when we know better, we do better. So if a book is brought before us and we find that there are some things within it that do not resonate with our district's beliefs or it is causing harm to our students, then I think that we should be taking another look at it. And we owe that to our students and making decisions. This was brought before us. It was reviewed and there was a decision that was made. And I feel that there wasn't enough evidence presented to us to overturn that decision. So I, it's my opinion to uphold the IMC's decision.
So my thoughts align more with Rob. I also have given this a lot of thought and consideration for months. I think I read the book last summer. Was it last summer? I can't even remember the timeline.
Yeah, it's in the summertime.
But it's difficult for me to think about, like even what Ginny said about, there are thousands of books out there that will trigger a response in someone. And so I just, for me, removing a book just kind of stands against really everything that I believe in. And I just feel like, and I kind of wrote some thoughts down, but I just feel like books serve as a window that provides a view into others' lives and experiences. Through literacy and learning, it improves our language skills, knowledge of the world and the people who live in it. It strengthens our empathy. If we start removing books for any reason, we are taking away a student's ability to learn about topics and from their own view, form their own viewpoints. I know that sometimes content may be upsetting or sensitive, but the important part is the discussion we have around those feelings and we explore how we feel and help each other with our understanding. This was a book of choice. Anytime a student, and I completely agree with what Jackie is saying, when a student feels uncomfortable, that we need to build our culture where they're, feel free to bring that up, be heard, and feel supported. Our process could and should improve. And maybe in the future, we list out books and we list what content might be sensitive in those. So there's an upfront, they know before they open the book and start reading it. I'm sure we can shore up our processes from the uphold process to the IMC or at the building level.
I was actually just thinking about my own experience raising my kids in the district. And when my oldest got into high school, I was actually kind of suspicious of what material that she would encounter, what she'd be required to read, mostly because in another school district, my younger sister had encountered a requirement to read something that she wasn't comfortable with. When I was told. When I was told that it wasn't a book, it was a book list, and that students in their English classes and their humanities classes could be choosing something that resonated with them best, then the fear of it was gone. I knew my kids would make the choices that I taught them to make and we go on from there. Now, I also have to recognize that my family isn't the same as every family. But I've also been on the IMC. I have also gone through a book challenge on the IMC. And knowing what I know now, as opposed to what I knew then, ten years ago, I might not have voted the way I did, which was to move a book from middle school to high school. The, the change in opinion about all of that comes from the fact that I started to get to know a lot of middle schoolers and recognizing that their life experience at that age is not the same as mine. I share Julie's extreme reticence to banning or appearing to ban a book. It's a problem for me. So I don't know. We have a process. There's no doubt that the IMC's members were thoughtful about it. So while I'm in favor of overturning it, or moving to overturn it, the IMC decision, it's more of an ambivalence now that I've listened to Jackie and Jenny talk about process and so forth. No wonder if there's anything more to say.
Since Director Bradford's not here, it would be interesting to hear what she has to say, since there are four of us.
I, I agree, and just based on our discussion, I'm not sure that we're able maybe to move forward with it without her opinion and having the whole board here.
I agree, and I guess, yeah. So I'll move that we defer this agenda item to the next regular board meeting that all five of us are at. The first meeting in January would be?
That's our next, next meeting is the thirteenth of?
January thirteenth. The motion is to defer until January thirteenth.
Second. Sorry. So, there's a motion on the table to defer this decision to the first board meeting in January, when we have the full board present? If someone moved in second and all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. Thank you for the discussion. All right, next is our teaching and learning equity update. Dr. Williams? And Clarissa? Hello?
Boy, I won't be before you long. I think we had quality time the last time we were together. I just wanted to say thank you for the time you spent sitting with our schools, listening to their school improvement summaries. We did get to hear from some of you. We know that some, I think one of you was out ill. And we are looking forward to our continued conversations around our school improvement plan. In January, the schools will be bringing forward and submitting to you short-term measures. So how are they monitoring in between these assessments, how students are doing in, with respect to the goals that they've set? And we will, in the interim between now and the course of the year, have schools who were missing from those presentations come and share a little bit with you in some of those in, in our future meetings during the, our, our teaching and learning update portions. And so we just wanted to let you know those things. And the, the other item that I had here, oh, is strategic planning. We have had, we are having a great time with Dr. Tammy Campbell, who's facilitating our strategic planning process. We have organized ourselves in various teams. We have our district leadership team. We have our core planning team. We've elicited student feedback, and at this point, we have unpacked our strategic vision in the form of I-statements of students. We also have established some core values that we are excited about, that will kinda anchor us and guide us, especially through some of the sticking points when it comes to implementing our strategic plan and a theory of action. We'll provide a formal report for you on where we are with our strategic planning in January, but we just wanted to signal towards what's coming up. So, what's really exciting about the, the next phase is with the theory of action, we'll be able to see how, from the classroom through the boardroom, how we all play a role in implementing the strategic plan. Everybody's voice matters and everyone will have key assignments and tasks for you. And so, that's just a preview of items to come in our teaching and learning update, and I'll turn it over to Clarissa Hightower.
Is that gonna pop up before I start greeting people? Okay. All right. I also will not be before you for too long, but appreciate the time to share with you some exciting news. I'm gonna give you an update on our Equity Advisory Committee, so our application window closed a couple of weeks ago, and we began reviewing those applications. And we are in the process of now doing our one-on-one interviews with the finalists. We had a total of eighty-one applicants for our Equity Advisory Committee. And we, it was so difficult. We had some amazing, amazing applications, all of them. But we narrowed it down to forty-one finalists, and that's who we are endeavoring to do our one-on-one interviews with this week and next. And then we will have our finalized list of Equity Advisory Committee members for you for our first board meeting of twenty-twenty-three. Based on their availability, I hope to have them here for you to meet in person, at least just to greet and say hi. And I also want to make sure that I highlight how the use of an Equity Advisor Committee helps us to support our superintendent in our OE for Equity. And what we're thinking about here is the two that I've highlighted. So, as you know, and you've had the opportunity to interact with, our Equity Advisory Committee serves a really important purpose for us. As we make sure we continue to engage and empower our diverse stakeholders, we have this group of very dynamic folks to provide for us information around barriers that they are seeing in their stakeholder groups. So we're talking about students, parents, certificated staff, classified staff, administrators. And so, when we solicit their input and then move forward with co-designing solutions to the barriers that they bring up to us, we can better remove them as we've identified them. And so that hits those two OEs, five and six. But those are in support of, once we identify them, in order to help us remove them, we can then provide the students with the access they need to be successful, as well as create those supportive learning environments. And so, I have the pleasure of meeting with them on a monthly basis, and I can't wait for you to meet our new committee in January. And that is my update.
Thank you. Any questions?
I wanna say that I read those eighty-one applications. And there are a lot of amazing people in our district who wanna help and be a part of this. We're lucky.
Absolutely.
Good work.
Thank you. All right. Next up is the Youth Truth Survey Results. It looks like we've got a group to present this, this evening. Welcome. Thank you for coming tonight.
Do I put this one in? All right, there it is. Thank you. Good evening, student board representatives, board directors and Superintendent Boyd. Super happy to be here to tell you about Youth Truth. Youth Truth is our survey, survey instrument that helps us get our perceptions, basically, from students, of course, from families and from staff members. So we know, as the quote says, that student perceptions are linked academically to academic outcomes. So we're super excited to hear what our students have to say. All right. We know that we have to listen to our students in order to be able to understand their experiences, so that we can better serve them. And Youth Truth gives us information that we can actually act on in order to improve our schools. We, in order to do this, what we're gonna be preparing students for this important survey, where we have been, there are a few people who have been doing videos to get them ready, so we thought it would, might be kinda fun to show you one of them. So I'm gonna go ahead and press on that, see if I can get it to work.
We're excited to announce-
Sorry, that's really loud. How do I turn that down? Okay, sorry about that, guys.
We're excited to announce an opportunity for each and every Roadrunner.
Hi, Roadrunners. It's Ms. Prowley, and I wanted to tell you about an important survey that you're gonna be taking that is anonymous, meaning that no one will know that it's coming directly from you. That lets us know how we're doing here at Re-Review.
In what areas, Mrs. Prowley?
Relationships, our community, our culture, everything, from how you're treated by different adults in the building and how you feel like you belong. So it's really important that you answer this survey truthfully and let us know, what are we doing well here at Re-Review? And what can we fix to make it better?
The survey will take about twenty minutes. It will be done online and in class starting soon. Remember, your answers are completely private. So don't be afraid to tell us what you really think.
Thanks for taking the time to help our school improve.
We're excited to announce an opportunity for each and every Roadrunner. We're excited to announce an op-
There we go. Okay, and not only does student voice matter, but family and staff voices matter. Research does suggest that efforts to improve school culture and student achievement needs to be informed by family and staff voices, as well as student perceptions. So, we know also that inviting families to share their voices, our, and their perspectives, and helping them understand that we value their input will also support family engagement efforts, which have also been shown to increase student achievement, as well as student attendance, improve grades and social skills. So we are super excited to get as many voices as we can, and we have a plan to do that. Last year, when we did, we did the survey in March, after it was finished, we knew it was really important to make sure that we notified the stakeholders about what happened during the survey. So we created an EPS with the direction of Ms. Superintendent Boyd, an EPS feedback loop. And so, during that feedback loop, we thought it was important to both thank all of the stakeholders, the students, staff and families who took the survey, as well as to share what happened in the survey for each school. So, schools shared out a thank you note. They shared out also a slideshow that they posted on their websites that shared a strength that happened during the survey that they saw. They also shared opportunities for improvement and growth, and they shared what they're gonna do about it, so what their next step plans are. We had this little feed, it's called, we called it a feedback toolkit, and within the toolkit, we helped our, in order to make sure that there was a uniform experience, we had a slideshow template. We even had, we wanted to make sure that everyone could understand, so we had a translation menu that translated all of the themes into Spanish and Russian, so that, you know, as leaders were working through this, they could actually, you know, create the, the slideshows. So that was, I think, helpful. People seem to appreciate that. Next up is Julia.
All right. Hello, how you doing? It's good to see you. I actually am gonna refresh real quick, and I wanna talk with you about three levels of data. And when we think about the types of data that we collect in our system, we have three levels. And so, we use this from a book called Street Data. If you're interested, I can share more, if you're interested in learning more about the book. But right now, we're doing this work in our equity teams across each of our buildings. And so we have a monthly Equity PLC where all of our equity team leaders come together. And so the satellite data is really what we think about when we think about like our S-BAC work and graduation rates, some of our attendance patterns. Our MAP data is where Youth Truth falls. So this is what helps us identify where we might need to address gaps and points us in a more focused direction. And then we get all the way down to street data, which is where we start to do shadows of students or empathy interviews, home visits, conferring. And so the reason I wanna kind of introduce this framework is because if we wanna have a comprehensive data system in our district, all of this data really matters. And so we have three schools who are gonna talk with us today. You got to hear in the SIP presentation's last board meeting lots of information about the satellite data and how we're tracking towards that. But I wanted to invite these schools also to help us think about this Level Two data. So first up is Fisher's Landing.
Hi, I'm Nathan Lee, and I'm sharing here tonight on behalf of Fisher's Landing to kind of share an overview of how we've used Youth Truth historically and, and going forward. So, like many other buildings, our equity journey started well before we brought Youth Truth in. But thinking around panorama data when we had it, and then going into our school improvement plans, we were emphasizing a couple of questions from both of those surveys and included those in our school improvement. So looking at student belonging, collective efficacy, and understanding how students felt connected to the whole school building, as well as to their classroom. And so, last year, we had questions within our SIP that were specifically related to the Youth Truth questions and the year previous to panorama questions. And so in addition to the end-of-year Youth Truth survey that we gave, we also did a similar one with a Google form in the fall that asked the same questions to students. And we also narrowed to those top four questions to a K-two survey, because the Youth Truth is third through twelfth. Is that right? Okay. Third through twelfth. And so we wanted to, we wanted a whole group experience so that we could really understand how all of our students were feeling connected within our building and within our school. And so in that, we were able to poll that student experience and make some, some adjustments and make some intentional planning throughout the year, and are continuing to do so this year in a very similar way, where we're looking at, on a monthly basis, what celebrations are we going to bring? Last year, we were also, there were a couple of themes in our younger grades where we were recognizing students were feeling connected and were saying they felt very connected to their classroom, but didn't really understand how to be connected across the school. And so that brought on a lot of conversations of, is that a developmental understanding of school is my classroom? Or is there an opportunity for us to build a collective sense for all of our students? Whereas our older students felt more connected, and we started thinking about, well, our older students are involved in band, and they're going to all these different places, and they're seeing school as not just the four walls of their classroom, but they're getting connected in other ways that maybe some of our younger students weren't. So those were just some of the themes that, that have come up in conversation because of the Youth Truth questions and some of the learning that we're doing and the reflections that we've had, and some of the intentionality that we're, we're making adjustments for students based on that feedback. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Greg Brown. I am the principal at Shaheila Middle School. And I'd like to first start by saying it is fantastic to see student representatives on the board. I'm a former student. I wish I was able to sit in that chair a few years back. But nonetheless, it's wonderful to see you. For us, Youth Truth was a measurement, but it was also a compass that kind of pointed in the direction for further areas of exploration for us. In sharing and analyzing the data with our staff, we wanted to avoid asking the question, what does the data tell us? Instead, we wanted to focus on what does the data make us wonder? Youth Truth data for us was not declarative, but it really just kind of laid these breadcrumbs out into areas of further exploration and inquiry. What more do we need to know from those who we are surveying? It prompted us to conduct student interviews and to explore some areas, some themes that popped up. One of the strands that we re-looked at was relationships. And there was one question in particular that caught our attention. And that question was, how many teachers tried to understand what your life is like outside of school? The options were none, some, and all. And for our teachers, it wasn't really necessarily about the quantity, but it was what can we do to create the conditions for students to believe that we care about them outside of the school? And we need to ask them. One of the unique themes that emerged for Shaheila was that through these interviews and through these singular somewhat disparate stories, a theme emerged. One of the things that was interesting is that there is a difference between checking in and connecting. And I see some nods over there, is that true? We didn't interview you, but yeah. And one student in particular who really liked fishing talked about, he had teachers that asked him, did you go fishing this weekend? But he had one teacher in particular that went to an outdoor show and came back and said, hey, I was at this outdoor show. I was looking at these fishing lures. They look different to me. I'm not exactly sure what they're, what they do, what they're for. Can you explain them? There's a difference between checking in and connecting. And so one of the things that we asked our teachers to do was think about that, be reflective about that in your instructional practice as you are checking in on students. Make sure you're also connecting with students. Youth Truth for us also spurred further activity in our school improvement. Beginning next month, what you'll see when we get back from break is that we're going to use a complimentary survey to have staff survey the students that are currently in their class, elicit their feedback, develop action plans to see how they can improve, excuse me, improve their instructional practice to be more responsive to student needs. Likely would not have occurred without our initial analysis of Youth Truth. So that's what we're doing at Shaheila with it. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Andy Schoonover, a principal at Legacy High School. Much like the other schools, we saw Youth Truth as a call to action. It's just not a data thing that we're going to look at once and move on. We're going to take the student voice, which again, awesome to have you here, and use it. It's not just a, oh, okay, so 58% of kids think what they're learning is relevant. Now what? So we really focused on application. What are we going to do with it? So it drove a lot of our school improvement plan. This year, we chose to focus on building learning partnerships and creating independent learners because part of that data showed that a lot of our students didn't see what they were learning as relevant to their lives or that they didn't have a voice in what that process was. So that data helped drive that, kind of our core goal for the year. The other one we saw a lot was kids didn't feel like they had a sense of belonging at Legacy as much as we thought that they would. That was a data point that surprised us a little bit. So this year, we've been very intentional in trying to do more community building activities that we hadn't done in the past. But coming back from COVID and not being together as much, we realized we need to do more together. So we're doing assemblies. We did a trick or treating thing. We did pumpkin decorations. So we're doing all these things, trying to build some community at Legacy. One of the great things about Youth Truth is it combines social emotional learning and instruction. So it's really a balance, I think, a lot of what the district is working on in terms of supporting students' social emotional needs through what's happening in the classroom. So we were able to use a lot of that data for professional development with teachers on how does the curriculum make you think and is it relevant? So we got that data in front of teachers and we dove into that a little bit. And then the last question we had was, why does it matter? Obviously, as a district, we're here for kids. And it's the kids' education, it's not ours. So we need to hear what they have to say in order to best create the plan that's going to work best for them. So it's been a very good growth area for Legacy, and we're glad we're doing it.
All right. So thought it would be helpful to hear directly from our schools, to hear the way that this data is driving some of the decisions that they're making, some of the shifts in the professional development. A couple of things I'm going to walk you through. There are several slides here, so I'm just going to scroll through some of them and then open to stop or if you have questions. But as you know, there's operational expectations. And what we've attempted to do here is demonstrate how these questions can provide indicators that connect to the operational expectations. So first, with the Operational Expectation 1.1, that we will develop a curriculum that includes instructional materials reflective of the diversity, experiences and needs of district students. So the gray box just represents that that question wasn't necessarily asked in elementary, but it was in middle and high school. So we've got a question here of how often do you see people of diverse backgrounds represented? And this is across the building. And we have it both for parents and students. Operational Expectation 1.2. So we permit and support robust conversations around controversy among and between staff members and students. So the student survey, how many of your teachers make an effort to understand what your life is like outside of school? My school puts practices in place that include families of diverse backgrounds and in conversations. Provide students with access to opportunities, resources and support that they need to be successful while considering factors such as race, ethnicity, culture, ability, gender identity, or expression, sexual orientation, religion, national origin, native language, housing status or level of affluence. So questions here, do you like the way your teacher treats you when you need help? How many of your teachers are willing to give extra help on schoolwork? Does your teacher ask you to keep trying when the work gets hard? And my teachers' expectations want me to do my best? Create and support learning environments where teachers, staff and administrators are consciously working to counter and eliminate the impacts of racism, discrimination, trauma, bias and unconscious bias in their interactions with students and their decisions, which directly impact students. So I'm going to pause here because I just want to make sure as we talk in our district about creating an inclusive environment that's supportive and has a sense of safety, it's critical that we create that psychological safety for our students and that starts with belonging. And so this is a really strong indicator for us to think about. And so those percentages against, I didn't say this before, but that's reflective of the positive responses. So these are students who either agreed or strongly agreed with the response. So we've got 56% are experiencing that sense of belonging in elementary, 38% in middle school and 34% in high school. And so I think you've heard our school leaders here today talking about, when they look at this data, it's really a way to set a provocation, to start to unpack that, possibly isolate race, disaggregate it and really start to get a sense of, okay, so if it's 56%, what's happening for the other percentage of students? And how do we get to understand that? And so I think we've heard them describe how they're going through interviews, talking with students and deepening an understanding. And then in addition to the equity, operational expectations, I pulled some of our safe supporting learning environment. So this is OE 10. So the superintendent will maintain a culture, or sorry, climate and culture that is characterized by support and encouragement for high achievement for all students. So when you make a mistake, does your teacher help you? Does your teacher let you explain your ideas? So the extent to which we're creating environments where productive struggle is really happening in our classrooms. The superintendent will ensure that all policies and procedures regarding discipline are restorative in nature, collaboratively developed, appropriately communicated to students and parents and enforced consistently using reasonable judgment. So a couple of things here that we've pulled are just how students get help when they're feeling upset and the extent to which they feel like there are programs and services that support them to have restorative experiences. And then consistency with the administration of policies according to our families. So the superintendent will ensure that all staff are trained annually about policies, procedures related to safety and that our interactions with students are professional, responsive, respectful and trauma-informed. So do you feel safe? Another really strong indicator of belonging for our students and how climate and culture is being experienced. Couple more slides here. So the superintendent will ensure that students experience certain environments that create personal perception of physical, emotional and social safety. So has anyone been bullied in the last year? During school, have other students bullied and harassed you? When I'm feeling upset or stressed or having problems, there is an adult that I feel like I can talk to? The superintendent may not tolerate behaviors or actions or boundary invasions or attitudes by adults who have contact with students that hinder their performance and wellbeing. So here, we measure this or the potential indicator is, are you being treated with respect by your teachers? And are you being treated with respect from students? One thing I do want to just name as we finish up with this is, I just want to kind of pull a quote. I love a good provocation as we finish this up to think about. So to disrupt the legacy of systematic racism, educators must center children and adults at the margins, gathering data through deep listening and engagement with those who, students and families, have been least heard. And so that's from the Street Data book. And I think it's really important that this data helps us identify who's having that marginalized experience. And it's giving us a more, I would say, holistic view of that. Sometimes we hear loud voices, but we need to make sure we're listening to the marginalized voices as well. So I'll hand it back to Ruth. Actually, do I need to take questions or about the survey questions?
Sure.
Questions, sorry, I was just checking you.
I have a question, actually, on the, and maybe they're all very similar, but the one about have you felt bullied in school? So is the percentage like affirmative, like I felt like I was bullied? Like those are the ones that said yes? So 12% of high schoolers said they felt bullied?
That is yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
I apologize, I can't remember your name, Fisher's Landing.
Nathan.
Nathan, that's right. I know we've met, I'm sorry. You said there was a survey that you aligned with Youth Truth for the K2 set of students. What was the name of the survey?
We just took the four questions that we identified from Youth Truth for our SIP and we made those onto a Google Doc.
Okay.
And used smiley faces per our K2.
So you create an age-appropriate presentation of the same questions?
Right.
Right, thank you. All right, thanks. Thank you.
So this past year, the Youth Truth survey and all of the data that you saw was from last March. This year, we've moved the survey up one month. And so we will be, you can see the dates right there. The bulk of it will be in February. We just yesterday had four Youth Truth kickoff meetings for our leaders. They could choose whichever one they wanted to come to. And they watched a video. They learned about how to plan for a successful survey. There's actually a lot of planning that goes involved, you know, that's involved in making sure that we get all the voices that we can, as you know, because I know you've done surveys before. But I wanted to just let you know that the EPS Assessment Department has a website for staff. And so if you click into this, it kind of gives you, gives them, this is the kickoff video that we did together. There's all kinds of information about why we're doing the survey and what the research behind the survey is. The actual questions are on there for them. But this is one of the things that is super helpful, I think, for them is we have developed a communication checklist so that leaders can kind of, ahead of time, know exactly what to do when in order to make the most of their communication and let all of the stakeholders know what's going on. So that is about it, I think, unless you have any questions about the rollout for this year. One thing I will say is we're super excited to see the data and we're hoping to see some growth. We saw some, you know, some numbers that really provoked us to do some things and we're hoping to see a positive response.
And Ruth, I'd like to speak to that a little bit. I've used this survey tool in three different settings. I did not bring it with me. It was here when I arrived, but I was really delighted that we had the Youth Truth survey here because I do think it has the potential to be a game changer. We've surveyed our students right on the heels of the pandemic, so. And when you look at some of these scores, it can be heartbreaking. I will tell you that it does provoke, as Director Singleton said, it does provoke conversation, it does provoke us to action, to really lean in with the kids and the students to make sure that we're understanding deeply their experiencing. And my experience in every setting that I've used this, we've seen the longitudinal data improve over time. I really do have faith and believe that that's going to happen. Our principals, as you've seen, three good examples of our principals, really not just giving a survey and reporting back, but going back to the students and asking more questions, wondering, and then developing action plans to support students. So there's a real positive aspect of the work that's happening in our schools. And I really think this is going to help us move forward in a positive way. So thank you for all your work, both of you and all the principals that presented today.
And we'll have data back in March, new data. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have any questions, Ruth, or anybody on the team, or any comments?
What was behind your decision to move it up a month?
We, last year, we did it right during the I-ready window also. And so now we're doing I-ready January, which we did last year too. And February is the month kind of in between I-ready and when SBA started. It's just, we just were trying to spread out the, spread the love.
Do you see a, do you see potential for Fisher's Landing's work? Fisher's Landing's work in customizing the survey for the youngers?
Yeah, in fact, Nathan and I have kind of talked a little bit about that, about offering to principals who might want to use it. The thing is, is the information from Youth Truth is, you know, research-based and especially tested. We just have to be a little bit careful when we create our own surveys. And, but I think that they can still be helpful and worthy. Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I just want to say thank you. I think that what was said in the beginning about, you know, giving these surveys and then taking the data, listening and then making changes that make improvements and really leaning in, like John said, and listening to what our students have to say. We can survey and ask people for their feedback, but it's what we do with the information afterward that really counts. And so I'm excited to see the results and hopefully we continue to grow.
Yeah, and just another shout out to all of our principals and assistant principals and associates that we're asking them to do a lot of things. Survey students, do feedback loops, lean into an ambitious instruction, manage all of the effects of COVID. And so they're really our heroes right now, making sure that we need to continue to thank them and share our appreciation and love for our principals doing some really hard work.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I was just going to check in with our student reps to see, like, if you guys had any thoughts. Did you take the surveys, right? So any thoughts about it, like?
There we go, hi. I would just like to say thank you for asking us about this and for sending out a survey. Of course, like we said- Of course, like we said, sending out a survey and just getting numbers isn't the only way to get our feedback, but going into classrooms and doing check-ins on us and everybody around us, I think that's also a great way, but the survey is a great way to start, and I'm really excited to see what happens with the updates.
Oh, and, yes, I am interested in reading the Street Data Book.
I knew that was coming.
It's a good read.
All right, next up is Craig Bernbach, our Executive Director of Communications, to give us all the good news, and I'm sure there's lots of it this time of year, right?
There is, I'm going to have to scroll a lot, I was actually practicing scrolling, so I don't take too long, if I can hook up. So yeah, we do have a lot going on in our schools, and especially toward the holiday time. I'm going to start with news from November, which of course was Native American Heritage Month. Our schools celebrated this month in many different ways. At the elementary school level, an example here is at Riverview Elementary School, where they worked with art discovery, and now I'm not scrolling, so of course I said I would scroll a lot, it won't go. All right, I'll go with this, all right, there we go. They did this art project, this is fourth and fifth graders, celebrating Northwest Native American art, well done by them. And over at one of our high schools, at Hila, they actually had a guest speaker, Samuel Robinson, who came from the Chinook Nation, as a guest speaker there at Hila, so an excellent experience for them. I'm going to scroll all the way down to Columbia Valley, which has a really fun story, just proof that student voice matters, and there's creative ways to learn, and things that weren't necessary curriculum that you plan on going into the year. This is a really good Dear John letters. So this, for the first graders, they saw that there was, and I'll show you the picture, there, you can see it right there, there was a bird's nest, an empty bird's nest, on one of their outdoor lights, and they requested that their janitor, John, please save the nest and bring it to them for their first grade science class, so that they could study it. So they wrote these wonderful letters to John, and John Detling, and you could see, they were very complimentary to John in the beginning, before they asked for what they needed, and in the end, there's a great picture of John reading the letters, and then he did, he saved the nest, and he brought it to this first grade class, well, they're going to study it in science, so, just a fun, wonderful story from Columbia Valley. We had multiple, we've had multiple career fairs in our district, including one at Cascade Middle School, I was actually lucky enough to be asked to be part of this. There was, this was a four-hour event, two separate sessions for students, where all the middle schoolers got to sit down with people from, everything from education to construction, and ask questions, and it was, I could say, the experience of having middle schoolers thinking about careers and ask questions about careers. The range of questions was interesting, I'm always blown away by middle schoolers. We also had one right at Legacy High School here, which I think was more intense, the questions were obviously more relatable to a more immediate future, but we've had a huge one at Heritage High School also this year. Now, I'm going to go all the way down to our schools, obviously during the, we know during the holiday season, so many of our schools, our students, our teachers, our staff, our communities give back. Couple examples, over at Legacy High School, they collected socks that they donated to the share house, so I know they did that here at the ASC, they came over and requested from our staff. Mountain View High School continues their wonderful tradition of Thanksgiving boxes and meals. I've been over there, these are huge meals, I mean, they provide for like 10 people, and we do want to thank the Finley family, they're owners of area restaurants, and they donate so much food for this wonderful cause. And then, John mentioned that he went to Heritage High School for their musical. This musical, if people don't know, Unique, and when I say Unique, we are the only ones that have ever seen this musical, because Heritage High School's principal, Derek Garrison, wrote this musical, which is just amazing, and it is called Wrestling the Musical, and he worked with a, I guess, a composer, a person in London, a young man in London, to create the music, which is just amazing. Derek has worked on this for years, and then got to premiere it with his students. I encourage everyone to watch this story about how they had to do it, you don't think about these things, but they didn't, the actors, you know, and the singers, they didn't get to hear these plays before. There's no reference to that, which you realize like, wow, so Derek Garrison's telling you how to do this, and you're doing it for the first time, and I know that it was a wonderful success, so I think that's just a fantastic story for our district. And then finally, we, I was able to do a tour of the brand-new Burton with Principal Chase, and this was the first time we've really toured a building this close to opening, and I put this in here, A, it's great to go look at this building and see the plans that Principal Chase has, when they go in this building on January 3rd. So this will be the first time that we have, you know, opened a school in the middle of the year, and I wanted to mention that we have the ground break, I mean, the ribbon-cutting for the school on January 6th, so they're going to be working to move into the school over break, so something to really look forward to when we get back. Thank you very much, and I will promise that next week's good news will of course include our wonderful new student representatives, so welcome.
Yeah, thank you, and I wouldn't say hats off to our teachers at Burton Elementary moving in the middle of the year, and we really appreciate their willingness to do that, and I think they're excited to move in, but it's a big lift for them too, so.
Thank you.
All right, next up is our financial statement, information item only. And then next on our agenda is board comments, these are comments by the school board. Does anybody have anything that they would like to share this evening?
I want to reiterate what John said earlier about Mountain View's holiday musical program yesterday with the Mountain View instrumental program. They were spectacular, and it's just another example of how amazing the music program in our district is, and it's just very rare, because we have it from fifth grade through high school, and students have an opportunity to become a part of this program at any point, and it's just, when you see what these students can do is just amazing. And the best part of it for me last night was the percussion ensemble, they performed a song, I think it's called Sofapia, and if you can go on YouTube and watch it, it's absolutely amazing, I keep saying amazing tonight, they were really, really amazing.
So, I made a visit to Frontier Middle School, I'm actually trying to visit all the middle schools, my family has a, chosen to give a book to each library, and I still have to get to the east side schools, the west side schools, it was all the east side schools, and was able to see a couple of things with the principal there. One that I won't give any detail about was a student crisis, and then after we went into the library and talked with the librarian there, and her assistant about how things were going in there, and presented the book, got into the cafeteria, and it's fascinating, and heartbreaking, and encouraging, kind of all at the same time, what the spectrum of feelings are among the students. Because, in addition to that crisis, the sixth-grade lunch looked actually better than I remember my sixth-grade lunch is always going. Speaking as someone who grew up kind of bullied all the time in those grades, and suffering some of the things that are now emerging in this Youth Truth survey, but it was comforting to see how the staff responded to the student who was suffering, and also how the culture of the school is really improving there. I haven't been to any music events in December yet, because the one I'm targeting is on Thursday with the Union High School Choir, and I've always enjoyed that show, so maybe I'll talk about that next time. I have several resources, new resources from WASDA regarding the legislative work. The district's, or the board's ledge rep right up until the end, and attended a meeting today where they showed a real improvement in the presentation and definition of ledge rep, that I know they've been working on for two years over the pandemic, and have reduced that to a very clear one-sheet, showcasing the opportunities that boards and, board ledge reps, and any board member really, have in advocacy. I'm looking forward to the FRN, the Federal Relations Network, work, and intend to maintain my role in WASDA as a coordinating member of the Federal Relations Network, for at least until after January, but there's a vacancy in our director district, so if you've got relationships with colleagues in other districts, I encourage you to make mention of the opportunity to them, because it means something, that we can bring our point of view to Congress. It actually helps. This year, FRN has plans to schedule a meeting with the Department of Agriculture and with the Department of Education. I made a determination to accept their invitation to go to DC in order to participate in those, and my son's coming with me. It's his birthday, and he wants to see DC, he's very passionate about politics and so forth, and what I'm hoping is that by this time next year, we have the infrastructure and plans in place that students can accompany us to the Day on the Hill in Olympia, and also the Day on the Hill in DC. I think it'll be work well done, so.
So, Rob, I'm happy that you're going to support your, obviously your role in WASDA with that, and then also support our district too, as we're, you know, advocating for things moving forward, especially with the new members of Congress there, and a chance to form some relationships when you go.
Appreciate that, that's the idea.
All right, anything Jenny? Anything from our student board reps that you would like to share? All right, just a couple of quick things for me, I did see the musical, The Wrestling, it was quite comical. The night I was there, Dr. Williams actually had a cameo appearance in the play, she played, she played the board member. And I, so after the play, I started, I kept listening to the whole play, because Principal Garrison wrote it, and there was all these references to the son of a board member, and the board member, and I kept thinking, like, were we like inspired in this? And he even told me afterwards, that he's like, don't, you know, don't worry, right? Like, but it was really comical, it was really funny, and it was just so much fun to watch the students, not only the performers in the play, but even the ones that were behind the scenes and all of their engagement, I mean, that's what it's all about, right? Is making these opportunities for our kids to be engaged in school activities. The other thing I just wanted to mention briefly was, I know that we are embarking on a couple-week break, and I just wanted to wish everybody a great holiday season, and a chance to refresh and recharge, and come back in the new year. All right, next up is future agenda items. Is there anything? That we have? Okay. All right, next up is public comments. Looks like we've got two folks that have signed up this evening. Any community member wishing to address the board may do so during the designated time on the agenda for public comments, as long as the comments are not personnel-related or about an individual employee or student, and not legal in nature. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes to address the board. Comments are to be directed to the Board of Directors as a whole, and may not be addressed to any individual member of the board, the administrative staff, or the audience. Please state your name and district affiliation, if any. So first, we have Sierra Gerber, is that right? Okay, come on up, Sierra, how are you this evening?
I'm all right. Can you hear me through this?
Yes.
There's my timer, okay. Over the last few months, I helped coordinate a bazaar with our school parent network to help raise money for the school. I volunteered because I wanted to help, and ultimately I spent over 75 hours of my own time preparing for and executing it. It was not perfect, but it was a learning experience. We were lucky to have the support of student and parent volunteers as well, we had some amazing students from Mountain View High School, I really appreciate their efforts, they did a great job. And though I have only worked for our school district for a few years now, I take the issues that we face as a community very seriously. When the district budgets were presented to the public, I believe twice within the last calendar year, and it was highlighted that there was a clear revenue issue, and that jobs would be cut, I did take it personally. I began a new personal educational venture into researching school funding models, and I tried to learn about how schools can and have in the past filled the gaps, when there's not enough funding available through traditional avenues. I recently had the opportunity to speak and hear from a few of our state legislators. I live in Legislative District 17, but I was also able to speak with a legislator from District 49. I used my short window of time to ask about school funding. These representatives spoke about how educational funding will be considered an upcoming legislative session. The general consensus was that they would be working very hard to get new legislation passed that supports all schools, students, families, and employees, but they also stated that they were not fully optimistic. I also recently attended a presentation about the prototypical school funding model, put on by TJ Kelly, who's the CFO of OSPI. While there are clearly improvements to be made regarding how our schools secure funding for operations on a statewide basis, I also learned that schools in the state of Washington have a lot of flexibility in how they allocate funds. In May, you were critiqued for cutting positions that were directly tied to student support and service in the DEI department. With clear and resounding response from the community, I believe the district was able to reconsider and move very swiftly, and avoided perpetuating a great disservice to our community. Now there is growing concern among staff, certified, classified, and administrative alike, that positions in our district continue to remain unfilled, and for that reason, we are struggling to serve our community in ways that are clearly needed. For reference, as of today, there are close to 170 unfilled positions in our district. There have also been multiple instances and reports within the last year, some of which have been covered by the press, and have garnered active investigations by the state that money is being misappropriated. I really hope that isn't true, and I hope they find that. And classified staff have voted down two contract proposals thus far, and it is a struggle, our bargaining is a struggle. If you want the community to believe in the district, the guidance that is provided by the board and our superintendent, I think something needs to change. I ask this as someone who desperately wants to help solve these issues amongst the plethora of other issues that face, that public schools face. We all work in this profession for a reason, and we are looking to you for actionable, meaningful, and clear guidance.
Thank you. All right, next up is Gary Wilson. Gary, you want to come on up?
Yes, thank you, and Merry Christmas, School Board, Superintendent Boyd. At the WASDA General Assembly on September 30th, Policy 61 was approved twice, first as a straight-up vote of school districts, and then as a weighted average vote. Policy 61 basically says parents are a major stakeholder in their children's lives and education. In light of this, I asked and submitted to the board at the end of October, a proclamation to recognize November as Parents' Rights in Education Month. And Lori Stoll let me know a little later that the board received multiple proclamations, and another was picked. I resubmitted it at the end of November, and asked that December be recognized as Parents' Rights in Education Month, and Superintendent Boyd let me know recently that December would not be Parents' Rights in Education Month, but invited me to read it, and I asked that January be recognized, and will read the proclamation as such. Proclamation, in recognition of the vital importance for education excellence and meaningful collaboration between the school district and families, we recognize December as Parents' Rights in Education Month, excuse me, make that January. Whereas we acknowledge parents are a child's first and foremost educator, and have the primary responsibility to the education, care, and training of their children. And whereas education is comprised of a range of activities by which families and communities teach knowledge and skills, including ethical and behavioral norms and traditions. And whereas fairness and equality must be afforded to all students and families in the school district. And whereas public schools need cooperation and support of all parents. And whereas the parent-child relationship shall be honored and supported by teachers, counselors, administrators, and school board members. counselors, administrators, and school board members. Therefore, we declare January Parents' Rights and Education Month, affirming the constitutional rights of parents to direct the education and upbringing of their children. And again, in light of the WASDA General Assembly vote, I believe this is in line with that, and would ask that you'd consider that for January, and if not, maybe you might share what the reason might be. So, thank you. I know we need parents, definitely a part of their children's education. I mean, that's going to help bring up our, you know, OSPI averages, so the more we get them involved, and a proclamation would be a start. So, thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Merry Christmas.
All right. That is the end of our public comments. At this time, we'll go into a recess where the board will sign paperwork. We will reconvene in a board workshop where we will have a discussion around the 2021-22 year-end budget report. Thank you.